Okay, we'll call this meeting to order for the city of Saratoga Springs Tuesday, December 17th, 2019 at 6:04 PM. Present tonight, I have Councilman Porter, Councilwoman Barch, Councilwoman McComber, Councilwoman Wildon, and Councilwoman Podeska. So we do have a quorum. Councilman McComber, will you lead us in our invocation this evening? And Councilwoman Barch, will you lead us in our pledge?
We'd love to.
Our dear and gracious Heavenly Father, as we come before thee as a city, we're grateful for the many blessings that thou has given us. We're grateful for this beautiful place we get to call home, and we're grateful for the residents of the city and all the wonderful things that we do as a community to bring us together and to have fun and edify each other throughout the holidays and throughout the rest of the year as well. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for all of the employees here at the city, and all the effort and all the time they put into helping our city to be successful, to be run smoothly. We're thankful for the volunteers, specifically our planning commission, at this time, as we'll be recognizing a few of them and for their service tonight. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for all that they do and their service to the city. Heavenly Father, we ask a special blessing that as we discuss the items on the agenda tonight, that we'll be able to remember the vision and goals for this city that go far beyond our lifetimes, that we can make decisions that will benefit and make the city even stronger. Heavenly Father, we love thee and we say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
The audience, please rise. Please follow me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, we will have public input. Time has been set aside for the public to express ideas, concerns, and comments for subject matter not listed on the agenda. Please be respectful in your comments. Please state your name and address for the record, and please avoid repetitive comments. Is anybody here for public input at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public input. Reports? Does council have any reports?
Yes. Just a note, we went to the legislative policy meeting, and there are a number of items coming up that we are watching very closely. They went through the tax reform that they just passed and talked a lot about that and what that's going to entail. Supposedly, the city in and of itself will be held harmless, which is ironic considering all the residents and us as residents are members of the city that aren't going to be held harmless, but that's okay. As far as the city goes, the city tax portion isn't going to be affected per se, although we might see a slight increase with some of the services, the additional services that will be taxed. That would be probably the main comment that we had as we were going through those items. Mark, I'm sure I think if there's anything else specific. There were some items I know that we took notes on, that he took notes on, that he'll be bringing to you as we look at some of those items.
We're pretty much expecting the typical year with attacks on the development front, things of that nature, as well as, you know, just minor tweaks to, you know, some of the issues that have kind of been longstanding. It's pretty standard fare. There's some retirement issues that may be coming up, but we'll keep you posted on those.
Also attended the last Lake Commission meeting. So the Lake Commission is going well. The staff have a good handle on that. Mayor Frost, Brad Frost, from American Fork was elected as the new chair, and Councilman Craig Jensen from Springville was elected as the new vice chair. So they will be looking for a new appointment to the board from us as soon as possible. Also, the lake is at like 1.8 feet below compromise level, so we're doing really good right now, and all of the reservoirs, the upper reservoirs, are about 85 to 90% at capacity. So we're looking really good, and they should be able, hopefully the snowpack continues this winter, and then it should be some good runoff this year. They also have a couple of grants that I know that Jeremy is, Mark's talked to Jeremy about, that we're, hopefully we're looking into some of those, like the recreation grants, possibly ways to get some sand and things like that for the marina. And also that we've gotten, we've got several studies that are going to be starting this spring, basically as soon as it warms up a little bit, and then as algal growth is seen, one in Linda Marina, one down at the Lincoln Beach Marina, and then one, I'm going to call it Midlake. Two of them are treatment, copper treatment studies that they're doing, trying to see how that affects the different algal blooms. As one, they're going to do continue throughout the summer, the other one they're going to do just as they see the blooms. And then the one that's in the middle of the lake is kind of cool. They're doing, it's basically an assay study. So they've got these caged areas inside of, inside of the lake that they're going to treat differently. So some they will supercharge with carp, some they'll do at lower carp levels, some they'll do with lots of fragmite in there, and they'll also introduce different amounts of nutrients that they might see, that they think affect the nutrient levels, like from what you see from the sewer outflows and things like that, or outfalls. So they're looking at those and how that might affect, they're trying to figure out what actually affects the algal blooms. And then the final thing on that is that as there are some studies coming forward, TSSD especially, we'll be watching closely, but we need to be watching also the scientists maybe have some preconceived notions that they're bringing into the study. So we're kind of watching those things, but it's good stuff. The lake is, we're working hard on cleaning that, and so it was fun to see the progress that we've made over the years. That's it.
Okay, we will move on to business item number one. Recognition of outgoing planning commissioners. I've asked Councilwoman McComber if she would recognize one of our commissioners tonight, and then Councilwoman Barch if you will, and then I will wrap up with the last one.
So it's my honor to recognize a gentleman that I've known for many years. He lives down the street from me, and I've had a chance to talk to him about many different topics throughout the time knowing him, from politics to community to neighborhood to the city. And there are a few people who have a love for Saratoga Springs like Chris Karn. And I appreciate Chris for his service on the planning commission. He was always well-prepared. He had done his homework. He came ready to discuss the future and the projects that were coming to Saratoga Springs in a way that really added to the discussion. And we, as a city council, appreciate the planning commission and all the hard work that they do, and we appreciate Chris and all that he has done. And then Chris decided to be crazy and put his name on a ballot, and that is always a risk, but it paid off, and we're excited to be able to accept and see Chris Karn in a couple of weeks as a peer up here on the city council, and he can continue his efforts in supporting Saratoga Springs into the future. And so with that, I'd like to invite Chris Karn to come up. Steve is just award.
The planning commissioner I get to recognize, I have worked very closely with for the last almost full eight years that I have been on council. She has been a phenomenal, phenomenal resource for the planning commission as she has gone through such incredible detail, all of the developments, helped work with code and improve the code in our city, helped work to improve the process, our development process, and make it fair and more simplified as we're working with developers and landowners trying to improve our, improve our city and to make it what we truly want it to be. She has a love and a passion for this city that is amazing and will be sorely missed, and we thank her for all she does. Sandy Steele.
Mayor, if I could, one thing that Shelley forgot to mention is that Stan has probably the longest non-planning commission member streak of attendance at planning commission of all time. So Stan, we will miss you in the audience each week.
Yeah, I'm sure he's attended more planning commission meetings and city council meetings than anyone else probably in the city. So, yeah. It just means you're just as crazy as we are.
And then last is Kirk Wilkins. I've had the opportunity to know Kirk Wilkins for almost 10 years now and work with him, both as a friend, a coworker, and on the city council. His love for our city shows when he stepped up and volunteered to be on the planning commission, and then as the planning commission changed, he became the chair of the planning commission and really helped kind of direct some of the council's goals to be business-friendly and get businesses into the community, and has left his fingerprints on Saratoga Springs for years to come. And I just want to share what is on all these plaques. It says, this one says, "Presented to Kirk Wilkins for your dedicated service on the city of Saratoga Springs Planning Commission. Your hard work, honesty, positive attitude, and commitment to making Saratoga Springs a great community is sincerely appreciated by the mayor and city council." Thank you, Commissioner Wilkins, 2014 to 2019 mayor and city council. So thank you, Kirk, for your service. I know, and your wife's here also, for all the nights you let him be gone to meet with developers and attend planning commissions and do research on the packets. Thank you, Kirk. them that we've worked with for so long, it's a good opportunity to bring more people into the city, to become part of this community and involved in the process here. The exciting part is we get to appoint some planning commission appointments. To do this, people submit applications to the city. Our planning staff looks at them, kind of looks at, kind of skill sets that we can use to better the city and to help us grow. And then the mayor pro tem, and I sit in on interviews with the director of our planning department to go through it, and this year, Mayor Pro Tem was Stephen Wildon, Councilman Wildon, who sat through these with me and would like to, I'd like to present to the council for approval. Do you want to do these one at a time or all together? Okay. We have Josh Wagstaff. What? Yes, if you want to come up and we'll get everybody up here. Ryan Reed, is he able to make it tonight? You were hiding behind our public affairs guy. Audrey Barton. And then we're going to reappoint Commissioner Cunningham, who has served the city for the last four years. There's a lot going on. These three have expressed a great excitement to be involved in the community. They have been involved in our community, and they bring a lot of experience to the table that will benefit and help our community to continue to grow responsibly. Councilwoman Wildon, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I just appreciate being part of the interview. They were all phenomenal, and there was a significant number of applicants, and it's great to be part of a community that so many people want to, I'll say volunteer or suffer through a four-year appointment. So thank you for being willing to do this and appreciate your service.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the planning commission appointments for the presented individuals. Resolution R-19-69 dated today.
I'll second that. I have a first from Councilwoman Wildon, a second from Councilwoman McComber. Any further discussion?
I'm excited to see these plan commissioners come in and start to get to know the process and work through that. I know that they love the city, so thank you for your service and excited to see what happens.
Councilwoman Podeska?
Aye.
Wildon?
Aye.
McComber?
Aye.
Barch?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And Mark, you can give them their first 600-page packet after the holidays.
That's about what.
Okay, so Stroud will have you guys all up to speed. Thank you for your service. Also, usually you do a lot of stuff at the beginning of the new year, not at the end. This is great. Our justice court judge had a vacancy. We've had people going through, we had lots of applicants that really did, really brought a lot of skills. It was narrowed down to a few applicants that had the opportunity to meet and interview the other day, and both were phenomenal applicants. I think the selection committee did an amazing job to send Saratoga some of the best in the state to come for our justice court. And what it, what it kind of boiled down to is after four days of really looking at the skills, all of them brought something to the table that is really strong. But my recommendation tonight really seemed to have a community focus in mind, which is something that for the last 10 years I've been on council, and the council members up here have really wanted to focus on as we grow the city and build things here, is to focus on the residents and did a wonderful job expressing that. Would love to have you come up, introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself. The council's had a chance to look at your resume. If you want to sit to the podium.
It's nice to meet you all. My name is Anne Boyle. I was born and raised in Ireland. My husband and I came out here to the United States, and I became a citizen about 10 years ago. I went to BYU Law School, and after my graduation, I worked first as defense counsel, then I worked as a prosecutor for the city of Salt Lake, where we did a tremendous load of cases. And for the last few years, I have been a deputy district attorney with the DA's office in Salt Lake. I have mainly focused on special victims cases, where we prosecute cases that involve crimes against children. And so I am absolutely delighted to accept this position. I live in American Fork. We've been there since 1995. We love this area. We love Saratoga Springs and everything that's going on here, and I am delighted to come here and work with the city and grow with it.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions? Councilwoman McComber?
I just want to welcome you to the city. This is a very important role. You actually interact with residents, other than probably the council, more than anyone else, and sometimes not in the best of circumstances. And your accent, even though it's slight, will maybe make it a little less painful. No, but we're really grateful because as talking to the mayor, and as he stated, the vision of the city is it's a community. And people, when they're here, they're not always here for the best of circumstances, and if we can make that situation that much less painful, and then they can actually grow and maybe make some new decisions or changes in their life, or simply they just were driving too fast, and let's just let them get back to their life, and maybe they'll drive a little bit more responsibly in the future. But that's what we really want. And when the mayor told me about the interview with you, it couldn't have sounded more appealing to what our vision is for the community, and we're looking forward to having you with us for hopefully a very long time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I had an opportunity to talk to a lot of people who've worked with her, and they talked about her integrity and willingness to go. So it's without hesitation that I would present her to the council for nomination and appointment and entertain a motion on that.
I move that we approve the justice court judge nomination and appointment of Anne Patricia Boyle. Resolution R-19-70 dated today.
I have a first from Councilwoman Barch. I'll second. I have a second from Councilwoman Podeska. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call. Podeska?
Aye.
Wildon?
Aye.
McComber?
Aye.
Barch?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Welcome to our community.
Thank you.
And your new, you have the new courthouse, too. That's exciting.
Very exciting.
Thank you.
You know, I just would like to say that when I went into the courthouse and I saw that you had a ramp for people, for the wheelchairs, my father suffered from MS and was in a wheelchair, and it used to be very difficult getting him in and out of public buildings, and I so appreciated that detail as soon as I saw it. I just think it opens our courthouse to everybody, and I just love that. Thank you.
Thank you. David, did you get pictures? Yeah. Anne, can we get a picture with the council with you?
Yeah, we do a full council. That was brilliant.
You guys.
That was brilliant.
Just go all over it?
Yeah.
Need a towel or?
No.
No, it's not that much water.
Yeah.
Not like a puddle.
Yeah, round it up, cancel it, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark?
Could you put your arm around him?
Do you have a comment, Mark?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Do you have a comment?
I just told them that they could run.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we will move on to business item four. The Pony Express Extension, Utah County Interlocal Cooperation Agreement, Resolution R-19-71.
Find a way to get the money for it now and then.
Is that you, Jeremy?
Yeah, well, let's just give it.
Okay. We'll wait, we'll wait just a minute.
Sarah, do you want to help her put that back inside so it's protected as she walks out? Will you help her put that back inside so it's protected? Stan's got both parts of it, but it's not. It'll be easier.
I'm so glad I wasn't here last time, because I'm going to go in that time now. I'm glad I wasn't here this time. I saw the pictures, and I was like, I don't want to get.
Yeah. We were just giving a minute.
Mayor and council, this item is for a agreement with Utah County for the construction of the Pony Express Extension project. This is funding we received a couple of years ago from MAG. The actual money doesn't become available until October of 2020. This agreement would allow us to begin expenditures now, although we wouldn't be eligible to get the money reimbursed until the funding was available. That would give us a way to fast-track this project. The intent would be to go out to bid on a design now, so that instead of beginning design a year from now, we begin design now and begin construction immediately when funding's available. So.
Okay. Any questions from the council? I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Pony Express Extension, Utah County Interlocal Agreement Cooperation Agreement, Resolution R-19-71 dated today.
I have a first from Councilwoman Porter.
Second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Barch. Any further discussion on the motion? Councilwoman Barch?
Aye.
McComber?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Podeska?
Aye.
Wildon?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item five, the Wildflower amended and restated master development agreement, DAI, and each ship is applicant.
King Mayor and council, for this item, the applicant is requesting review and an action on a major amendment to the master development agreement for the wildflower community. This is being done in order for the applicant to combine the wildflower and the springs community into one community plan. This comes as a single item, and the community plan amendment, general plan amendment, and rezone will be reviewed, hopefully on the January 7th city council meeting, and any approval of this MDA would be contingent upon approval of those three items as well. See, Dave, do you mind putting the arrow? Oh. There we go. Let's see if this works. There we go. So a brief summary of the proposed changes for the overall project are that there are no changes to the overall ERUs. However, with the recent cemetery deal between the applicant and Camp Williams, they are requesting 14 density bonus units for the cemetery agreement. So this would add 14 units to the overall plan. So instead of 3,238 ERUs, there would be 14 additional units. This also includes a reduction of 61 acres of commercial area due to the applicant selling the property south of SR 72 to UDOT. So that has been sold and is no longer a part of the community plan. The plan would also add 100 acres of open space to the springs area, and this is to comply with the 30% overall open space requirement. There are more single-family units and less multifamily units. However, the single-family lots are smaller. They're all going to be smaller because of this. Now, within the council packet that was published, there was an exhibit, the exceptions to the city's vested laws, that wasn't included. So this had been emailed out to the council earlier today, and I have all the content from that provided in this presentation as well. These are the exceptions that the applicant is requesting to all the vested code requirements and future code requirements as described in the proposed MDA. So this includes exceptions to all the land use requirements. Staff has provided an additional column. So the first three columns are provided by the applicant. Staff's comments are on the right-hand side. So all of these list the topic, the code reference from the city code, the applicant's proposed change code, and staff's comments on those. So I'll just quickly touch on the ones that staff still has an issue with based on the document as we have it today. So the uses that are identified to go within the business zones, the business park and commercial zones in the community plan, identify a limit to the industrial uses proposed. They are listed as 20% of area for each individual use, and staff has requested that this be changed to 20% of the overall commercial uses. So no matter what the use is, no more than 20% of all the commercial area within the wildflower area should be industrial uses, 20% or less of all of it, not individual, like, the issue that staff sees is that you could do 20% of self-storage and 20% of industrial. So, right. Staff's okay with the utility access roads and maximum water pressure, the way it's written here, for slopes. Now, the city has been undergoing an update to our hillside ordinance for the last year. We've had a consultant and a committee that have been looking at this, and I have a representative from the committee, if you have any questions on that, that is more of an expert in the proposed plan. So the- So these comments are based on the city's proposed hillside ordinance as well. So the applicant is requesting the allowance of man-made slopes between 30 and 50%, and staff does not support the creation of slopes that are steeper than existing hillside for developable area. And then, moving on to multifamily parking, there is a request to allow required parking to be covered rather than enclosed, so that there are no garages allowed in multifamily units. It's important to note that multifamily includes townhome and condominium units, and staff recommends that this not be adopted. This has not been allowed in any community in the city as of this date. And then, moving on to drainage corridor protection, the applicant has indicated that they haven't received comments provided by engineering, and I got those from Gordon not too long ago, so that's the comment in green, that separate city approval is required to pipe a historic drainage channel, so that the applicant will work with engineering at the time that they choose to do that. The rest of the exceptions requested relate to hillside development. So these comments are from staff in relation to the proposed hillside ordinance. So mass grading of slopes, let's see, sorry, it's kind of small.
You need a copy?
Oh, I do have a copy right here, thanks. Yeah, it's still kind of small, but, let's see. So, this is requesting the allowance of mass grading of slopes greater than 30%, I believe in general, and the draft ordinance allows limited, isolated areas of grading of slopes greater than 30% based on, you know, the size of the area that exceeds the grade, if that makes sense. So that's kind of a summary of the comments there, and then proposed language based on what we have in the proposed hillside ordinance as well as in Mount Saratoga. And then, limits on changing natural grade. The applicant said that these code sections identified here should be eliminated. The draft hillside ordinance doesn't have a four-foot limit and will allow 10-foot-tall retaining walls, so if the applicant, if the Wildflower community goes by the future-approved hillside ordinance, then this request is moot. The next one is grading for accessory building pads. So the draft hillside ordinance doesn't support this and does not have, no, sorry, the draft hillside ordinance doesn't have a limit on, a four-foot limit on retaining walls, so they will allow 10-foot retaining walls. And then, grading for accessory building pads, oh, sorry, it's a little off from the paper that I have here. Grading for accessory building pads, the draft hillside ordinance does not change this code, and they want to limit disturbance of steep slopes, so we wouldn't support the allowance of grading steep slopes for accessory structures to limit the disturbance. That brings structures outside the building pad and the building footprint area to be able to have an impact on the slopes. Limits on graded or filled man-made slopes, the applicant is requesting to allow these slopes to exceed 25%, to go from 4:1 to 2:1 maximum. The draft hillside ordinance wants to limit the disturbance of steep slopes, so they do not support, it does not support that. And then, terracing and retaining walls. Again, this is requesting to allow retaining walls up to 10 feet, and the draft ordinance allows retaining walls up to 10 feet. And then, the applicant is also requesting these changes to the setbacks and land development requirements. Staff has identified areas where we need to have more information, or we do not support the change in building height, side setbacks, rear setbacks, and front setbacks. And then, there was also a section for reference, including what we've approved in Mount Saratoga, just so you can tell what we have or haven't approved in the past. Mount Saratoga is probably the most similar community in terms of requests of, yeah, location and requests of deviations from the code in this sense. And then, the cemetery. So the cemetery is a part of this master development agreement as well. So there has been an agreement reached between the applicant and Camp Williams for 20 acres of property to be purchased by Camp Williams for a future cemetery. The density that is identified within this section of the MDA has been based on proposed ERUs that should be adopted within the community plan. So as long as the community plan doesn't change, then 63 units will be displaced based on the exhibit that the applicant has included in that agreement, that staff has a copy of and is included as, I believe, Exhibit F in the packet. However, I just learned that this agreement has been updated, so I don't have the full copy. Yeah.
Yeah, I've got, hold on, I've got an updated version of that agreement. Paul just shared this with me. It does not include any sort of a tax write-off in this agreement. And so, I know that that appeared in the last one, and it was not part of the arrangement, and so that's been removed, and I believe that this has been executed by both parties. So, again, to clarify, I think that has been resolved and has been addressed relative to this particular document.
Okay. So this 20 acres, so assuming it's still 20 acres, the same location and everything, this area may not count toward open space. Since the density is being transferred, it's simply being taken out of the community plan. The overall open space must be recalculated to account for the open space you see here that's being incorporated into the cemetery area. As a result of this agreement, the applicant is requesting approval of a density transfer of 77 units, which is the 63 units shown here being displaced by the cemetery, plus a requested 14 bonus units in exchange for the delay. So that, I assume that means the delay in the ability for Camp Williams to have up to five years to purchase the ground and come to a final purchase of the property. And it's important to note that the language says the units may be transferred to any other area of the development, so this could be single-family, this could be multifamily. It's not written into the agreement, despite what anyone may say today. It's not in the language, so you could potentially have less than 5,000 square-foot lots in the single-family area. So that's just something to keep in mind. Some concerns that staff has with the language on the cemetery is that staff hasn't seen evidence to back up the proposed valuations given by the applicant. This is the only documentation that we have, which are the numbers the applicant has given us, but not the sources. This document also refers to 64 units rather than the 63 that we saw in the agreement. And then, the fair market value with the updated agreement on the cemetery, it doesn't include the tax write-off language, the donation language, and it does include density transfers. So it's just raw land, 2.3 million for raw land. And then, staff is not comfortable locking numbers of the density, especially the density bonus, into the MDA until we have the valuations for where the values behind the calculation of the 14 density, added density units. And then, here's the particular section of the MDA that includes the language on the So the numbers were a little off, so that is redlined in the copy that's in the packet. So it should be 77 units based on 63 displaced units and 14 additional units. The conditions that staff has proposed are as follows. So, conditions of the city engineer and planning department should be met. Number three refers to our hesitations with, at least from planning, from the specific number of units identified in the MDA. Proposed exceptions to the hillside ordinance, staff, planning staff feels comfortable with requiring that the applicant comply with any hillside ordinance that is approved in the future, because that seems to alleviate a lot of their concerns and requested deviations from the code. And this approval is also contingent upon approval of the community plan amendment as well. The community plan must be consistent with this, with any approved MDA. And with that, I'll turn this item over to the council for questions.
Add before we start, council?
We're now down to two bags. We sure appreciate your time tonight. Thank you for getting together. Are there any specific questions you'd like me to start with answering at this point, or can I?
Do you have anything to add to what was just presented?
Well, so, we really appreciate the energy and effort that your staff has been working with us in trying to get ready for tonight's meeting. We've been working now towards a deadline of the end of the year for several months, and they have moved heaven and earth to keep up with that as we've been moving forward. We are not totally done with the community plan component of the project. Our intent in coming tonight was not to have you vote for a community plan yet. We clearly are not on the same page with your staff as it relates to the items that Tippi has outlined. We did reach an agreement, I believe, with the legal side of the project as it refers to the MDA, for the most part, I believe. Kevin?
Oh, is it turned on? Okay. So, we're talking about several, a few different things here. The development agreement itself, which is the form that you see in front of you with, you know, that starts out with the whereas's and the sections. We've reached agreement on that. There's an exhibit that Tippi mentioned, that planning is really a planning matter and an engineering matter, and those are the development standard exceptions that they're asking for. The table, and that's an exhibit to the development agreement. So in the development agreement, you have some, you have some different rules. First of all, it says they're locked into the version of the code as of today's date. There's some exceptions to that. It's engineering standards, architectural standards, other things like that, that wouldn't affect density and zoning and permitted uses. Those are exceptions to being locked into the code. However, they've asked for those exceptions, which Tippi mentioned, hillside ordinance, there's building height requests, setbacks, engineering standard exceptions. That's their request tonight, which will get wrapped into a community plan as well. So you can either, you could address the development agreement itself, the form, the template, or you could address, and/or address the development standards, whatever you'd like. Also, at a future date, the community plan will be coming for future city council approval. I'm comfortable with the term, the agreement itself, like I said, the development exceptions, development standard exceptions that they're asking for. That's outside my expertise, that's a planning recommendation, engineering recommendation.
And to interject, we would prefer to kick that can down the road a little bit with those exhibits, because they should match the community plan, and we're right in the middle of finalizing those pieces of that puzzle. What we were successful in doing is bringing an agreement with Camp Williams for the 20 acres. And I appreciate the fact that a representative of Camp is here tonight, Paul. We were able to come to terms based on the meetings that we had with Camp and your city representatives. We appreciated Councilmember Porter coming and working with us. We've ended up in a little different space than where we were in the last meeting on that, and I don't know how much communication you've had as it relates to that conversation, but if it's appropriate, maybe I can walk through what transpired there. We left our last meeting with some concern about the valuation that we had received. There were some stakes in the appraisal that were passed out. We were looking at millions of dollars in difference. We sat down with Camp and Councilmember Porter. We went through those numbers and found some additional mathematical issues that we were working on. As we got down to it, we came back with a number of the fair market value related to the property with the 63 lots on it. And as I talked to Paul, he indicated that even though that number was dramatically less than what we had been talking about, it was still outside of the number that he thought the camp would be able to perform on. I asked Paul, what number do you think you can come up with? Let's forget about what the value is, Paul. How much money do you think you have? And I hope I'm not paraphrasing too much, but the number was a $1 to $2 million dollar number, which is significantly less than what the fair market value, I think, in anybody's valuation of 63 paper lots would be in today's market. So we went back to the drawing board, trying to figure out a way that we could get Camp a dollar amount and still be fair with the city. And what we determined was that if we can take those 63 lots, like we had done on the other 78 acres, and intensify the use of the developed area a little bit more, if we were able to add just 14 more units, and Camp was able to stretch from their $1 to $2 million dollar number to $2,330,000. And we walked through the numbers rough with Mark and Councilmember Porter and Paul, as we talked about. We don't have to spend money to buy water rights for those 63 lots, and that means we don't have to do improvements for that. I think that may have been what Tippi threw up on your Excel spreadsheet board there, but we had this kind of rough, and there's a lot of assumptions in there, and we probably could get into the weeds on which one's right or wrong, what is water too much or too little, and we were just trying to be fair. And as we got down to where we thought this was fair, and Camp was willing to stretch to their $2.3 million dollar number, and we were able to reduce the number of units, if you remember, at one point, we were talking about adding 600 units to the... I said "we," I was asking for up to, you know, this crazy number that was not appropriate to ask for. So we came back with this number of 14, right? So here we are today with an agreement with Camp. They've stretched, and the net benefit to the city becomes 100 acres of buffer with all of the land that is affected by 130-plus decibel level of sound removed from development, and, you know, the ability to, I think, accomplish what we had set out to do, which was to get the cemetery grounds set aside for Camp. And we were able to do it in a timeframe that, frankly, when, you know, you look back and you think that we've been dealing with federal agencies, my hat off to Paul and your staff to help us accomplish that. We've got that agreement done, so we all know what it is. Part of what we would like you to consider tonight is what the city gets for that, and, you know, put that, your stamp of approval, if you will, on that by approving the MDA tonight, so that we know that piece of the puzzle is done, and then we can go forward with your staff and talk about, you know, how do we treat open space, and how are we going to get that done, and how are we going to be treating the hillside development, part of the code that's in process of being amended but isn't quite there? The exceptions to the engineering stuff that we've gone through, I think, are very, very close to being done. We need a few more days, maybe a couple of weeks, to get through that. But that's how we ended up here.
I just, I have one question. Kevin kind of talked on this. This is not necessarily covered in the MDA. These points are part of the community plan that are being amended, correct? Yeah, well, okay, so Exhibit E, I think, is what it's referred to. So they're asking, in this development agreement, they're asking for, in addition to any exceptions in the community plan, they're also asking for certain exceptions. They said that they're fine with delaying a vote on that until the January meeting. Is that correct? Okay. Yeah, we're not, we want to make sure when we come to you with these exceptions, we come with the support of the staff. You've got a great staff here, and we think we can get there, so we're pulling this out. You would be pulling that out? It looks like it's Exhibit... Okay. It doesn't have a number signed. Exhibit F, I think, is what it would be. Exhibit F, I think, is what it would be.
We are going to have some exceptions to what we're going to bring you on the seventh because we've intensified the use for some urban town home developments, some smaller lot development. And we get this as a package deal, and we'll have to figure it out. We think we can get there.
Councilman Barts has a clarification question.
Kevin, with the MDA, the MDA used to, I think still does, refer specifically back to the community plan and ties to the community plan. So, technically, if we approve the MDA, it approves the community plan.
Well, we, you would be, you would approve the MDA tonight, or the amended MDA tonight, on the condition that the community plan would be voted on at a later date. So, you're not making the decision on the community plan. You're just, you make, you make a vote on the, on the development agreement if you choose to approve it tonight.
So, if the community plan doesn't.
On the condition that the community plan would be later approved.
Work out how one or the other party approves, then the MDA is null and void, and it goes back to Title 19.
That's how I would interpret it, yes.
Yes.
All right. Well, I just wanted to, to, you know, I mean, I've, I've been kind of running point on this for a little while, and I just wanted to kind of explain, you know, what I think has happened from our, our standpoint. You know, Nate gave his, his version of events, and that's fine. I, I, I'm not disagreeing with your version of events. I'm just saying, I'm giving my, my version of events. I heard some. So, I, this, this property, you know, started out, when it came into the city, it was being looked at as a potential prison site. The city council wisely did what they had to do to make sure that didn't happen. When we approved that, some problems were introduced. Well, I, I wasn't on the council at the time, but when it was approved, some problems were introduced. I think anybody will admit that there, there were, it was less than optimal.
But not as dense.
But not as dense as a prison. And, you know, the, the quality of residence might be slightly higher. So, so we, we're, we're, what I have been trying to do since I've been on council is trying to fix some of those, some of those warts that are, that are there and see if there's ways that we can, we can do that. This 20-acre property, that, you know, is now as a cemetery, is, is a, a place where, as a city councilman, I could not in good conscience allow people to live. It's, it has, it has sound issues, it has, you know, vibration issues. It's gonna, it would, frankly, allowing people to live there would be a mistake. And people 10 years from now would be on Facebook, or whatever people are using 10 years from now. And they would be like, what idiot approved this? What idiot allowed people to live this close to a firing point? I don't want to be that idiot. So, I, the cemetery is the, the, you know, is the answer, or is a answer to how, how to achieve getting homes off of that, that property, as well as Nate has worked to move homes off of the, the other hillside that is affected by the noise and the vibrations. You know, we're, we're talking about just the MDA. It's been talked about how we'll have to revisit the, the community plan at a later date, and that's fine. I just, I just hope that as, as we deliberate this, and I'm, you know, I'm agnostic to how, how people feel about it, but I want you to, to realize that this is, you know, after working on this for two or three years, this is what the three parties, this is the best that the three parties are, are going to willingly agree to. You know, so, you know, like it, don't like it, that's fine. Just realize, like, you know, we're, we're either accepting this deal or we're going with Title 19. That's probably where we're at at this point. So, you know, I, and one of the conditions is to remove the, the, the numbers until we can get some clarification. Is, does that condition?
Please don't need to correct me.
Because I don't, but my understanding would be that we would be agreeing tonight to the additional 14 units as part of accepting this deal. But all, how that's applied and how it looks is contingent upon us figuring out how to do the rest of the stuff we still haven't figured out, but to be outlined. Did a great job of outlining where we.
So, my, my, I guess my question is, is condition three, if we can show those again, condition three, is that something you are unable to accept?
It'd be really hard for us to agree to, to the agreement with Camp at those numbers without knowing that we were getting that.
Right, okay.
Piece of the puzzle. So, yes, I, I don't know.
I, I, I just want to.
I believe you changed it down to the correct number of 63.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, that's, that's been changed, but.
Plus the 14, so 77.
Planning's condition is to just completely strip the numbers out and not have any detail on that.
I think what the applicant is asking for is approval of that, that transfer tonight, correct?
I'm just trying to understand what is in.
Right. But the setbacks and all of that will be pushed to.
To the seventh, or whenever it is you guys bring in the community plan.
Yeah.
So, to be clear, staff's reservation about this is that there's never been documentation outside of the spreadsheet provided by the applicant, which is fine. If that's what you choose to do, that's fine. We can certainly go with that. We've never seen any appraisals. We've never been able to do that. Although Paul and Nate, you know, both have seen it, and they've discussed it in our presence, we've just never been a party to that. So, again, that's our hesitation if, if they supplied the, the appraisal. And to, to my recollection, Paul has seen it, and he said the appraisal actually exceeds the 2.3 million. And so, going off of Paul. So, again, if, if that is in fact an accurate portrayal of that, then, then that's, that's the concern. But again, we get into the math of, of the economics of it, and all of it is based on, as Nate explained earlier, a lot of assumptions that we've made. And if you're comfortable with this agreement at this time, you can approve that. Staff has not been able to verify any of those things. And so, again, we're throwing the red flag, saying we, we haven't been able to document this.
Okay.
Councilman, I, I could suggest that we're, we're happy to provide that appraisal in the interim while, while you're considering the.
The community plan.
Considering the community plan. So, we're, we're not hiding the ball on anything. And I, I'd rather call it a pink flag rather than a red flag. It's kind of a, and I appreciate the, the staff recognizing, making that recognition that you have some issues there, but we're happy to provide that.
Okay.
Between now and the 7th of January. It's, we're confident that you'll understand that the math, that this is fair math.
Okay, well, so, I'll just close saying, you know, this, this MDA, moving, moving those homes off of that space solves a problem for future residents. It creates an additional 100 acres of open space that will be available, you know, to the residents in your neighborhood, as well as to city residents, some of it. There will be public use access agreements for, for most of it. It also reduces the amount of multifamily residential by 20 acres. And so, in the balance, it's, it seems to me that the 14 units is, is a acceptable price to get those, those things taken care of. And so, that's, that's where I stand. Thanks.
I have just a quick clarification question. So, we're talking about the additional 100 acres. Is that where we could potentially have a city cemetery? So, we're just not discussing that. But before, we would do any kind of community plans.
We're talking about the end of the community plan, the ability to put.
Yeah, because I would want that to be aware to residents moving into the area, that not only would there be a military cemetery, but there potentially could be a possible city cemetery. So, I just wanted to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. In terms of today's discussion, we're going to get out of here a lot sooner, which I'm glad, because we're removing them. I'll tell you right now, just as you're working through the community plan, I have, like, huge concerns with this. And so, I think that staff, Phil knows, at least, the most of the people I'm hearing, I think they even have an idea where Councilman-elect Karn is at because he's been on the planning commission and they've had conversations. So, they, they really will represent us pretty fairly. And I think you know us as well. We've been working together for a while. So, just really think through these things because exceptions should not be half of the things on a page, on table. So, for the 14 units, I believe that as much as I don't like to do additional density, this is the right thing to do. This is our ability to be a part of this agreement between the three parties. Because if we don't, I think that the whole deal blows up. And for me, the net reduction in densities is a, is a positive. We have to remember that. We're still a net negative compared to what we could be. And so, and there's still so much potential for added value to the city. Again, whenever densities are being considered, I'm always looking at what is the added value or benefit. Even the 100 acres of open space, whether it's a cemetery or not, is an added value. And the ability to provide a cemetery for the men and women who put their life on the line is, and then here's the news. It's all right.
Run, Gordon.
Run, Forrest! That was awesome.
That's what I would have done. Just to be clear.
Yeah, that was pretty good. But to have a, a place where, as, as we're running out of space in the current location, to have something close to, to their home, because that is what a base is to the men and women in the military, it is their home. And so, I love that we're able to, to do that. And then also appreciated the comments that Councilman Porter talked about in terms of the right thing, in terms of not allowing residents to live in this space because it's just not the right thing to do. So, I'm okay with the 14 units, and then just really work hard to get this in more alignment where it's more palpable and we could have some real conversation. And that doesn't mean because you ask for the everything, that you can get some things. I've never been a fan of that. If you've watched me over the last 10 years, I actually go after developers who throw a whole bunch of stuff, hoping that a couple of things might come out of that. And that's not my way. So, I'm just giving you a heads up. So, just, just know that it could be, I don't want any of these things. It could be, you know what I mean? So, just, I, I'm not a fan of, and I think Shelley, you, you guys know what I'm talking about, where it's like a whole bunch of things, and then, oh, we got these two or three because we throw so much at them, and then we're compromising. So, but the 14 units, absolutely, let's move forward. Let's allow you to get your funding so we can continue to move forward because I think it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
So, I definitely have more heartburn over this than I think maybe the other council members do. As I look at this, this is not just an additional 14 acres. So, one of the things is 14 units, sorry. This is not just an additional 14 units. This is taking what would have been half-acre lots, and all of a sudden, they're doing it at whatever density they decided to do up in that in their, their community plan. This is not what they were given. They're taking it, and that original number of units is much, much, much lower. So, in, in fact, this is actually a lot more than just 14 units. That being said, I do appreciate moving the homes away from Camp Williams and the potential of having the cemetery, not just for the veterans, but also the potential cemetery in the, in the open space up on the hill. It is not an ideal place to have a cemetery. You guys certainly couldn't develop it with homes, and so really was unusable space anyway. So, you also get to count it as open space. The number one piece of heartburn that I have with this is we got this one hour before our council meeting started. One hour. We've not been over this MDA. We haven't been over it. Personally, I am not like the Democrats in Congress. I can't do it. It may be a good agreement, it may not be. I have no way of knowing. There's no way. You said earlier that staff has moved heaven and earth, and I agree. They have worked over, excuse me, over time beyond reason. And I don't see that you have done that. I am very disappointed because, and I realize that if this gets passed, the community plan itself can be worked through. The community plan itself could be worked through, but we are getting none of the benefits of what we would have had through Title 19. None of them. We are not getting the commercial diversity that we would have had. We are not getting the housing type diversity that we would have had. All we are going to get, if they get their way, is 5,000 square foot lots. That's what's possible through your community plan. Again, you guys can work through that, so be it. But number one thing is, we don't actually know. Not one of us has read through this MDA. Not one of us. I would love to be able to say, this is a great plan. I can't do it because I literally don't know what is in it. Last time I read the MDA, it was tied directly to the community plan. Therefore, if I approve this MDA, as far as I know, I'm approving the community plan. So, anyway, this is, it's disappointing. It is. I just wish, 260, so just for those that are out there, 266 pages that we got one hour before council, which means a half hour before left my house, and probably a half hour for others left their house or their work. I just don't see how we can do this. Again, I do appreciate the concept of moving the homes away from Camp. And I agree with Councilman Porter that, that I think that that is a necessary thing. And I think that any good developer would do that anyway. I haven't seen, the numbers, staff hasn't seen the numbers. I have huge concerns. So, for me, that's where I'm at. There is no way I can do this tonight.
Councilwoman Wobel?
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments. So, just to walk a little bit of a line, I, I didn't read through 100% of it, but I did take a look at it. And just for my own benefit, I don't want members of the community thinking I didn't look at something because I absolutely did. I did not read all 260 pages. Did read through it. I think other council members did. I know some didn't have time, but on the record, I did go through it. And like engineering plans, I don't read 100, all 500 pages that Gordon turns to us. I do read a lot of chunks of it, and then I am reliant on his profession, same with Kevin, to, to back us up on that. So, just before going on any other comments, just wanted to state that. I'm comfortable, I'm glad, so we'll remove from this Exhibit F, just to make sure we get that right. Is that the right one?
Anything you're approving?
It is the 30 pages. It's about 31 pages of, of agreement. That's for what's up for consideration.
But it does reference Exhibit F. So, I just, if we go forward, I want to make sure we get that right condition.
So, just, actually, I was reading through the list of, the table of exhibits. It's more than just that. It would, you would not be approving Exhibit B, Exhibit C, or Exhibit, it just has a blank mark, but it would be in the future Exhibit F. And also, I, I believe that we should have a condition on there about the hillside ordinance that you would, so you wouldn't not be approving in the vested laws, the current version of the hillside ordinance, because we are working on that, on a, on a change to that, which Nate has agreed that he would like to be subject to the new one. I mean, he'd have to review it and make sure it makes sense.
I do think that was one of the conditions listed on the screen. I think it was number.
Those are the things that you would not be approving with this agreement.
Right. So, Nate and Bruce, just to be clear, they would be approving the, the development agreement, the restated master development agreement with no exhibits? Is that, is that clear?
Be subject to us figuring out what those exhibits would be.
Right. And, and so, the, the clarity that I want to offer is, is that it would be only the MDA and that all exhibits, the community plan and all other documents, supporting documents, will need to be in their final stage at adoption of that. So, again, no more changes, no more red lines, no more of those kinds of things. So, again, with zero exhibits, to, to Councilman Barts' concerns, if no exhibits are accepted, then it does gut that down considerably. then it does gut that down considerably.
We are approving the 14 lot.
You're approving the density transfer off of that, which is a total of 77 units.
So...
That is being, sorry.
No, that's fine. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. As far as the 14 units, I'm comfortable with that. And I appreciate the 14 units, yes, that's what I said. So and I appreciate staffs going in and talking about the valuation of those because I think that's the direction from the majority of the council. But my standpoint is, we're getting pretty particular there, and I have real issues when a government, and this is the direction that staff got, so this is in the reflection of them, but when government tries to dictate profit margin. And so we're getting down to 14, 14 units, and for me, it's not, how much are you going to profit or lose or et cetera? On this is, is, are we willing to accept those 14? I don't like the term bonus, but additional units, because we're not giving you a bonus. But 14 units, I'm comfortable moving with that without seeing the valuation on that because I think we're getting too far in the weeds as a governmental entity of analyzing profit margin. So that's kind of where I am. This is a, will be different than significantly improved from the prison, obviously. Different what we originally approved, but there's going to be maintenance of groomed open space, not maintenance, but retention, we'll get some groomed open space, but then also some natural open space that won't be maintained. And I think about people moved into the city, and one of the reasons I moved here is there was natural open space. And so if everything gets filled up with, it's, natural open space isn't as great as like a park or something like that, but it's a benefit to the community. So I do appreciate Camp Williams and everyone coming together to work something out with all these different conditions we've talked about. I'm comfortable moving forward. And I do appreciate all the other council members' commentary. I'm not in disagreement with things that are being said. I do appreciate what's said and value opinions. I just have a different approach, especially when it comes to economics. So I'm comfortable moving forward with those conditions and allowing the 77? I have 14. 77, removing the exhibits and then making sure that it's conditioned, or any additional exhibits, whatever condition we need to make, that its community plan is subservient, that's not the right word, but contingent, yeah. I had the right word in the beginning and just made up things as I go. So that's all I had.
Councilman Podesco?
I just wanted to add my two cents. A lot has already been discussed here. But I do appreciate you guys working with Camp Williams to get that arrangement done as we have discussed earlier. We know it becomes more complex as the more parties get involved. So it's great to see that happen so quickly once it did begin. I've been torn on this as well, just in the aspect that I too don't like getting documents right before our meeting. It's one of those, you must pass it before you know what's in it. I don't like that. Having said that, as a council, we do read through the packets and we also rely on the professional standards and experience from staff. And so after we read through those packets, we often consult with the staff on questions we have and so that things are being done properly. Having sit through and kind of listened to the changes that are being made, I'm more comfortable with those exhibits. It's still difficult not having been able to read through all the information that's been presented. And so to have to rely on staff on that sole merit is difficult because what are we up here for? If we're just relying on staff on everything? So there's one of the things that you mentioned here that...
Are you looking at my notes?
Well, because, so the exhibit, so we're not removing all exhibits because Councilman Weldon said, removing all exhibits, right? It's just, it's just, it's just those.
There's like property description.
Yeah.
Just as word is.
So it's just these ones that you wrote?
Yeah.
It's B C N F.
Okay.
Exhibits are on page 69 of the packet.
Okay, so we're talking about two different exhibits.
Yeah.
We want to refer to, is there our exhibits in the staff report? We're talking about the exhibits in the development, the amended development.
Because I'm looking at page 35, right? That has the table of exhibits. Yeah.
And that would be part of the condition, and one I noticed that, one of the conditions, recommended conditions in the staff report was to remove the discussion about the density transfer. So you may choose to modify that condition as well. And I just, were there any council members that read the agreement in the packet that was put there yesterday?
I read that.
Okay, because the full one. I think there was some confusion here. There was some confusion. The one that you, that's in your packet, hasn't been changed since it was put there. It was yesterday, but I realize that's not very much notice.
The big one.
But the, yeah, the agreement...
The one that was put in today was only 30 pages.
There was not any agreement put in there today that's different from the one that was put there yesterday.
The one that's in the drop box right now was put in there at 5:00.
Last night.
No, the, the, what was added was these three pages at 5:00.
Oh.
Okay. So just to exhibit, we also got no notice, and I think it was actually added yesterday. So I knew it was added yesterday because we got no notice.
Okay.
And I tried calling you, and I apologize, but your daughter texted me.
Oh, that's what that was.
That's what that was. Yes, yes, no, my apologies, but I tried to reach out to you last night, so that was, that was on me.
When the agenda was amended yesterday, that's when the agreement was placed in the packet. So if, anyway, if you, still, it's not much notice, but the agreement hasn't changed since yesterday.
Okay.
Except for the removal of the tax language, right?
So that tax language is not in the amended development agreement. It's in the real estate purchase agreement with Camp Williams. Oh, okay. They... It's their contract, so that's not even in the MDA. They have changed that, they have changed that apparently. Mark has a copy of the amended agreement.
I have reviewed it. Paul Raymond still has the copy. I had to get back to him a few minutes ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. So as far as, and that's what's been confusing, is when things are rushed and just given to us at last minute. So just to clarify, the agreement that was put in yesterday, that has not changed?
No. The development agreement, amended development agreement hasn't changed. There's other things apparently that have been put in the packet that I wasn't aware of. The agreement itself is the same one that was put there last night.
So again, the code deviations was what was put in the packet. We also added, you know, today we added Ann Boyle, documents for Ann Boyle's appointment and things of that nature, and then the planning commission things, but those were already addressed earlier.
Okay. No, I feel better about that then, because I thought that was, has been adjusted since last night's submission.
We have been rushing this, and this is the thing that you told us not to do in November, and we want to apologize sincerely for that. This is coming through with duct tape and bailing wire, and it's, at least the MDA is there. And that is entirely up to you as to how you want to proceed forward with that.
Okay.
Councilman Weldon?
I just want to say to staff's defense, before anyone on the council gets upset with them, they didn't call, they couldn't call everyone and said, do you really, I know this isn't what you guys wanted, are UK pushing this forward? And I think, Councilman Podesco, you're on there, I don't know who else. I think everyone, but I know Shelley, you were occupied with other things, but they did reach out because they were going against what we had originally requested, and I think obviously a majority of us were saying, hey, let's move forward.
And again, it's not my problem with staff. My problem is with the applicant that doesn't get stuff in on time. What we've told staff and what staff has been doing with every other developer is they have to have it in well before our deadline, which I think is the Thursday before.
And I'm not in argument with you. I'm just letting you know that staff followed the direction.
Oh, I agree. Staff has been bending over backwards in this some.
I wasn't arguing with you at all. I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Councilman Conroy?
So I just wanted, on the record, that I did read the agreement, the master development agreement. And I'm not a Democrat. I'm a conservative Republican who reads contracts before I agree to them. And that's nothing against, I actually really appreciate Shelley's comments around the substance of this, of the timing and the delays, et cetera, that I agree 100%. So, but I just wanted on the record that I did read it. And I specifically read where we would have the rights to get out of the agreement. Whenever I ever sign any kind of a contract, it's always my out clauses that I read the most, and I look at the details of, because that's where you're locked down. My biggest concern was the tables, and so having those removed makes, I wasn't going to vote for this if the tables were involved, because we would be here much too late, and I have Christmas plans. And so that's why I wasn't, that was, this was supposed to be a short, quick meeting that we were able to help you out with. And so removing the tables, and we can deal with those, the newly elected Councilman Kern can have his voice heard on this. I think it's important. He was elected by the people to look at these types of things, and I appreciate that we'll have the opportunity to give it the time necessary to truly vet and have a good conversation around those issues. Again, knowing that it's going to be a true discussion and a vetting. In terms of the 14, and I appreciated the comments about the densities and the smaller lots. We are getting smaller lots, but we're getting more single-family homes and less multifamily housing. And that has always been a stance for me, that I've never had the same with the huge lot requirement or the desire for that. That's not as much, that's definitely been Councilman Barch's stance, and I appreciate that, and her voice has been heard. But for me, it's single-family and multifamily, and we're actually seeing a reduction in multifamily, even though we're going to have homes closer together, a single-family. Again, people have a choice to move somewhere. If people are moving into this neighborhood, they, they're not going to be like, well, I wouldn't have, I would have more likely moved into this neighborhood if there were half-acre lots. No, they're moving in, never knowing, really. They're never going to do the research to know that there were going to be at one time half-acre lots. Sadly, the trend in our city and in the country is reduction. We have big lots in the South where families live. We're reducing those. They're no longer five-acre lots really in the South. No one wants them. And we're reducing them to quarter-acre lots, third-acre lots, because that's pretty much the biggest that you're going to get. I will give, Councilman Barch, we did have somebody who bought three acre lots to make a three-acre parcel in our city, and they built a 28,000 square foot house on it. So there's no lot, it's just a big, huge house. But it's a beautiful house. I actually got to walk through it, yeah, because they're, that's my ward. But I've known them for longer than, they lived in our ward at one time before. I was in the bishopric when they were in our ward, so it's a great, great family. But so for me, that is a win, that we're getting less high-density housing in this development. And so I know that it's more dense, single-family units. I personally would love to not have that, but I'm not going to stop a process moving forward to force a half, a half-acre and acre lots. So the 14, again, the out clauses, just for the council, when I read them, we have like literally every opportunity. It's at the end. It's like pages 23-ish. I just looked at that. It's the sever clauses.
Your biggest out clause is if you just don't approve the...
The community plan.
Community plan.
And that's, and that's in here where, so I mean, literally, I mean...
I'm going to point that out.
Well, no, I mean, it's not a point out, it's the fact. And it actually says it in here, I would like to say, where we have to approve the community plan. If we don't approve a community plan, then this is null and void. To your comment, actually, Councilman Barch, you mentioned that. So there has to be an approved community plan or else we're done. This, honestly, full transparency for the people on the camera or people in the room, this whole thing is about financing. We need to be able to allow you guys to move forward with your financing, and we, the agreement is, is that you need to be able to have the units to make the numbers work for your investors, is how I understand it. That we have to make sure that you have the 77 units that you can transfer and you have the deal with the camp. Everything else, all of the details will be outlined in the community plan. That's how I understand it correctly.
Can I add to that?
Please, and I'm done. I yield my time.
And it's not just the financing, it's so that, part of the financing, so we can keep the open space for Camp Williams and the cemetery and stuff like that. Yes, yeah.
So the financing and then the open space.
I know you knew that, I just wanted to clarify. So we're not, as much as we like you, we're not doing it just for you and your financing, it's for us too. So, yes, in the camp.
The most substantive part of this entire agreement is what I had discussed before about the discussion on which code applies, under what circumstances and what exceptions are made. And I will say this, that I told the applicant, I said, at my preference, I don't, I don't love development agreements. I don't lock, I don't like locking the council in for a really long period of time when future councils want to have legislative discretion to make changes. What it really boils down to is they're locked, they're locked into the density, the zoning, permitted and conditional uses, really the substantive parts of the code that would allow them to build the number of units that they're asking for. Everything else, they're going to basically defer to the current version of our engineering standards. We even have the right to change architectural standards, as long as it doesn't create an unreasonable hardship for them. Design standards, we can change those. This is every, almost every request that I made, I did make one request that they didn't agree with, and that was a change to, I said, I want you to follow whatever process is in effect at the time of an application. And they pushed back on that. They want to follow the process that's in our code right now in the future for like a planned application. That is, that was a concession that I made.
Actually, I gave, I gave up on that, Kevin. I gave it back, I gave it back to you. This agreement, pardon me for cutting in, this agreement is actually more favorable to the city certainly than the Springs Agreement. It has two paragraphs, three, that's 3.3.8, Kevin? We put the provision, we put processing in, so processing moves forward.
So then they're, they're not even locking themselves into the process. So if we change our process in the future, and I told them, I said, it's usually to your benefit. Usually we've been making administrative decisions, planning commission and planning director, it really is to your benefit to go with that.
And that's why we agreed to it. We made, we, this, this agreement is better than, for the city than certainly the Springs Agreement. And many of the things that were, without opening a can of worms, many of the things that are in that list that's not going to be considered, I point out to you that they're already in the Wildflower Agreement. So those are things that we're going to, we're perfectly willing to talk about, but as for Wildflower, we could deal with those as it is. So the compromises are working both ways. And that's, I guess the definition of an agreement is something where everybody's a little bit unhappy. And so without risking, we worked our butts off on this development agreement, and we appreciate working with Kevin. I worked on this at 2:00 in the morning in another continent. So it sometimes takes time, and you've still got the ultimate clause of, if you don't like the changes, just don't approve it.
Just in the interest of moving this forward, I think everybody has expressed kind of where they stand, so I'd just like to make a motion.
Okay, a motion?
I move that we approve the Wildflower amended and restated master development agreement as listed in business item 5, removing Exhibit B C N F to be replaced at a later date with updated versions that are in compliance with the community plan. And striking condition 3 from the staff findings and conditions.
I have a first from Councilman Porter. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I know, I know you got a motion, it's not technically proper for me to talk, but could I suggest that you amend that to fill in some blanks? Because there's a couple of blanks in this document, like the address for the city.
I'm sorry, what?
There's a couple of blanks in the document, so, I mean, we'll fill in the blanks appropriately.
Like F is really a blank.
Right.
No, I meant, there's a couple of blanks in the cross-references, that's all.
And the cross-referencing, and to, and to make any non-substantial changes necessary.
Yes, thank you. Okay. I have a first from Councilman Porter.
I'll second it.
I have a second from Councilman Weldon. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes. Do we need to add a condition? Maybe it's in there explicitly, but this is conditional upon approval of the community plan.
It's right there, six.
Number five.
Five, yeah.
Well, it's not explicit. No, I'm kidding. I just missed it.
Okay.
And for clarification, too, I think if you adopt the findings and conditions in the staff report, you're covered there, but just to make sure that everyone is clear about the hillside ordinance, that is one of the, that is one of the differences, we're not vesting under the current code with the hillside ordinance.
That's, that's addressed four.
That's a number four.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay. Perfect. I will do a roll call. Podeska?
Aye.
Weldon?
Aye.
McComber?
Aye.
Barch?
Nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We really appreciate your vote of confidence. Tonight, we'll work with your staff to get the rest of the package, the, thank you, meat and potatoes of the package back to you soon. We have also had conversation with you regarding the SAA, and we're hoping tonight that you would also be willing to instruct staff, not to approve that, but that we can work with staff to bring back to you as part of this complete package, an SAA package for our bonding of the infrastructure, the master infrastructure related to the rest of the project. Can we address that, or is this the appropriate time to bring that up?
It's not on our agenda either.
It's not on our agenda.
It's not on our agenda, so they can't.
Oh, okay. My understanding was that you just needed some.
Stan was asking.
Okay.
So...
Huh?
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
Paul? What does that mean, Mark?
I think, do we have closed session, Mark?
No.
Okay. Paul, thank you for representing Camp Williams and being part of this discussion with Nate and the council and our city staff. We appreciate that. And your willingness to sit through many meetings till the end.
We just clarified.
On the record, that, that motion adopted the findings and conditions in the staff report. It was pointed out by Sarah Carroll that that actually wasn't part of your motion. I think that was the intent, when you said, when you mentioned that you're striking one of the conditions, but if you could just clarify that for the record.
Yes, the, what, do we need to re-vote?
I would just make a motion to clarify the, the motion on the previous item.
The previous motion included all staff findings and conditions except for the one that was taken.
Correct. I have a first from Councilman Porter.
Second.
A second from Councilman Weldon. Any further discussion? Podeska?
Aye.
Weldon?
Aye.
McComber?
Aye.